Could we please call the meeting to order?
Mrs. Rigby. Mrs. Gillis?
Here.
Mrs. De Silva?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
And Mr. Melody.
Here. Okay, for the Pledge of Allegiance, can Mr. Wolf please lead us in the pledge this evening? Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for September 27th as presented?
Seven.
Seven.
Questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
And Mr. Melody.
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. We have a few awards and recognitions this evening, so I will turn it over to Dr. Marshausen.
Okay, as we finish up our pictures out in the area with those students, why don't we come ahead and ask Mr. Ireland to come forward and share our Tolls presentation at this time? And that will allow us to wrap that up too, and allow Mr. Ireland to get this portion of the meeting as well. So, thank you, Tom.
Sure. Thank you. No problem. Our report will actually be fairly short and sweet, as Dublin schools are getting started in the swimming thing, so is Tolls, and things are going very well. Again, as I've expressed in the past, we have record attendance, a record enrollment at Tolls right now. Currently, we're at eight hundred and seventeen students, which a hundred and eighty-five of them are from Dublin schools. So, the staff and administration are very excited about that. There's a good vibe going at Tolls right now, and we're working very hard to keep that going throughout the year. The other thing I just wanted to bring up, and not necessarily know that everybody understands how this works, but Tolls also operates five satellite programs out there on the campus. And in those satellite programs, we have a hundred and sixty-six students that are enrolled. So, those are considered Tolls students in their satellite. That's not included in that, the hundred and eighty-five that I mentioned before. But, so we do, we have five programs and five startups for those programs that are under the Tolls umbrella. So, it's, so we do work very closely with the city of Dublin Schools and very excited about that. So, that's really it. I'll answer any questions if anybody might have at this point.
Just want to, the students at Emerald, do they spend the entire day at Tolls, stay at Emerald only, or do they go back and forth? Is it?
They, most of the time, they're at Emerald campus, but I think it's only for about a half a day for that program, and then they go back to their homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite our high school principals forward and Mr. Mike Holmey, our Director of Principal Leadership for our secondary, as we honor some very special students from across our three high schools.
For members of Dr. Marshausen, Mr. Turner, it's an honor to be here today to recognize the outstanding achievement of some of our brightest students from Dublin City Schools. The College Board National Recognition Program awards academic honors to sophomore engineers who take eligible administrations of AP, PSAT, or NM, SQT, or PSAT 10 exams, and who identify as African-American, Black, Hispanic, Latinx, or Indigenous, or attend high school in a rural area or small town. Qualified students must identify as African-American, Black, Hispanic, Latinx, or Indigenous, or attend high school in a rural area or small town, as well as have GPA of three point five or above. Students must also score in the top ten percent of the PSAT, NM, SQT, or PSAT 10 tests, takers of the test in their community, or earn a two, or earn two AP scores of a three or above by their sophomore year. Qualified students are then notified and invited to apply for the recognition. The following students have been awarded the recognition National African-American Recognition Award. Jordan Allen. Olivia Allen. Roble Ray. And Tamiya Graham. National Hispanic Recognition Award goes to Landon Harris. And Michael Perez. At this time, I'd like to welcome our three principals up to the podium to help recognize our National Merit Semi-Finals.
Good evening, everybody. The approximately sixteen thousand semifinals in the National Merit Scholarship Program were designated for more than one point five million program entrants nationwide. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for seventy-five thousand National Merit Scholarships worth about thirty million dollars that will be offered next spring. Students enter the competition by taking the preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test used by NMSC as an initial screen for entrance. Dublin City Schools is proud to have twenty-six National Merit Semifinals this year. About ninety percent of the sixteen thousand semifinals will advance to the finalist level in the competition. Every finalist will be considered for one of the Merit Scholarships awards offer. It is from this group of sixteen thousand finalists that all National Merit Semi-Finals Scholarship winners will be chosen. Merit Scholars designees are selected on the basis of their skill, their accomplishments, and the potential for success in rigorous college postwork. Every finalist will compete for a scholarship that will be awarded on a rolling basis between March and June 2023.
Since we did introduce them, Mike Aron is the Principal of Dublin Jerome High School, Matt Perrott is the Principal of Dublin Kaufman High School, and Tom Cochran is the Principal of the Saeta High School, just like the Rocking them and recognizing them here tonight. And these are those high schools. Because of our semifinalists, I will announce them, and they will come up and receive their certificate. Ian Owl. Rohan Atule. Ashika Achu. Alexis Columbo. Vanyan Gandhi. Akash Gangga. Alana Gopakanti. Alyssa Wong. Dustin Yi. Daniel Mayu. Alexander Hughes. Sonia Jace Walker. Christina Jen. Amy Johnson. Nitra Joshi. Sumayju Kethini. Max Lee. Shivo Michael. Ninja Venkati. Shivani Peledo. Trudy Shaw. Jason Wong. Cameron Chu. Tiffany Yang. Anya John. Elizabeth Silva. Let's give one more round of applause for these students.
To our parents and our families who are here, thank you for your continued support. We know that these students don't reach this level of accomplishment without the support that they continue to receive from our parents and our families. So, congratulations and thank you to all of our families who are attendees this evening as well. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Tyler Wolf to come up and share some information with our partners about Life Sports and the program that we have this summer.
Thank you, and I wanted to echo the comments from Dr. Marshausen. Just congratulations to all the students who just called. It's amazing. So, good evening, Dr. Marshausen, Mr. Tyler, members of the board. Just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity tonight to report to you on our valuable partnership with Ohio State University, particularly that of the Life Sports pilot that was held at Riverside Elementary School this past year in July. Also like to give special thanks to Don Anderson Richard from Ohio State University, who introduced us to this idea over a year ago. Since 2009, Life Sports has impacted the life of over eight thousand students in central Ohio by working with the most vulnerable students in the community and providing them with sport and social skills instruction. Life Sports is nationally recognized as a career model for sport-based positive youth empowerment. This past summer, during the course of two four-week sessions, a hundred and fourteen third, fourth, and fifth graders from elementary schools in the Dublin-Soda High School feeder pattern had the opportunity to participate in this award-winning program. These schools were Hopewell, Riverside, Chapman, Old Saw Mill, and Wright. For many complex reasons, sports participation is lower across the board at Saeta High School. There's more diversity, more economic challenges, and more social issues. The goal of Life Sports is to provide opportunities for students and to give them the confidence they may need to join a team, go out for a sport, learn valuable life skills, and as a result, a chance to feel like they belong to the school and the community. Students in Life Sports experience eight different sports in four weeks. They rotate through sessions to learn basic sports concepts while simultaneously learning about self-control, effort, teamwork, and social responsibility, otherwise known as sets. The day of the sessions, from nine AM to three PM, five days in a week, for four weeks. The program included breakfast, lunch, and transportation for all participants. The program also included expert instruction and coaching by training facilitators from Ohio State University. The staff this summer included doctoral candidates, social workers, sports med students, and other outstanding and highly trained individuals from Ohio State and Dublin. The pilot this year at Riverside was led by former Ohio State College of Social Work intern and now graduate Claire Sebetta. Through our collaboration with Ohio State University, Claire worked at Dublin all year last year as an OHSU College of Social Work intern. She did such a great job that we had the pleasure of hiring her as S3. Claire now works full-time at Tom Sullivan High School. Organizing and carrying out Life Sports is a hundred percent team effort. By working together, we were able to provide Life Sports at absolutely no charge to families. This feat was accomplished through the generosity of the Dublin School District and supporting many community members. Dublin Parents, DYA Support, Lacrosse Coach and Friend Jim Sodderman worked tirelessly to secure thousands of dollars in donations from the community to make Life Sports a reality. Jim is a hero for Life Sports. There are many people in this district to thank for Life Sports. Now, we have the OHSU team. I want to personally thank each of you, especially Dr. Marshausen, Chris Hammers, Ryan Kerr, Jeff Stark, Shalina McCall, and Brian Killen. By working together, a hundred and fourteen kids in Dublin experienced what Life Sports has to offer. For many, it may have been a life-changing event. We hope to expand the program to two hundred and forty students next summer in Holden and Davis Middle School. With your continued support, we can make this happen. Two-hour Life Sports meetings for summer participants are now taking place throughout the year in Dublin. We hope to keep the momentum and have participants back again next year and the year after. Now, I'd like to introduce Dr. Sam Bates from the Ohio State University, who will share the research portion of Life Sports and the data that negotiates the impact that it had.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Dr. Sam Bates. I'm a assistant professor in the College of Social Work, and I'm thrilled to get to show you some of the things we learned this summer. So, everything Tyler mentioned, our mission around Life Sports, but we also conduct research because we want to be informing the field of youth development as to how sport can be leveraged as a context to support life and social skill development. So, we have three primary outcomes that I'm going to show you today. The first is youth's sort of perceived efficacy around their ability to engage in sport. So, what you're seeing up on the screen here are the main sports that all of the young people, the hundred and fourteen who joined our camp, experienced this summer. You can see where they thought they were, how good they thought they were at the beginning of the camp, and then you can see every single sport increased with our largest increases in sports like lacrosse and volleyball this summer, as well as their efficacy around running and engaging in physical activity. So, all of those trends are trending forward down our list of the programs. So, first outcome, their perceived sport ability. The second one, we're very excited about, because we were at a school-based location this summer, we will actually be able to look at growth and motor skill development. So, we pulled the twenty percent of young people at camp who we saw were having the most difficulty throwing and passing at the beginning, which shows us things like balance and focus could also be impacted. So, we measured their growth and motor skill development at the end, at the beginning of the four weeks, and then at the end, and what you can see here is the bottom twenty percent moved from somewhere around the thirtieth percentile for their gender and age up into the fortieth, almost fiftieth percentile. So, as we think about wanting to engage in sport and focus and agility, these are all promising outcomes from just a four-week intervention. And then our last outcome, we're very excited about, we really hone in on how sport can teach social skills. So, like Tyler mentioned, we focus on sets, self-control, effort, teamwork, and social responsibility. If you come out to Life Sports and you demonstrate any new skills, you get buttons and positive praise from your coaches, both in sport and in the classroom. And you can see here that from the youth, from their perceptions, about two-thirds felt like they grew significantly in these skills during the four weeks. And then you can also see what the parents perceived as their growth as well, with many saying, "Uh," about three-fourths came in and could recognize times when they could put forth effort or engage in teamwork, and left somewhere up in the ninety-one percent. So, we're really excited about these outcomes. We have more to share if you're interested. I'm going to pass it over to Claire, who's going to describe some of her experience as the leader of this intervention this summer, and now one of your amazing staff members at Dublin Schools.
Thank you. So, I think the fun part to share the fun stories to help personify some of this data and the growth that you were able to see. It was hard to pick just one memory, but I would like to share something that I think helps to encapsulate how campers can grow, not only when they're at camp or during the summer, but how it can transfer more long-term. So, one of our campers who was actually chosen as our female overall Camper of the Year for the second session, lives with a handful of brothers, the only girl in the house, and a handful of her brothers play football. I'm sure she hears about it all day at home, but she didn't like it. She liked to stick to her own sport. She played softball until she came to Life Sports. So, she got to play, like, she got to play football at camp for five days, and it started with the most foundational skills of catching, throwing, worked up to playing a full game of two-hand touch, and she learned that she actually really liked it. And she was able to build on her skills, build up her confidence, so then she had the opportunity to go to the combine tryout for the community's football team. She went running along with her brothers, was the only female present there to try out, and had a lot of success. She was super proud to come back and share with us that she had built the skills in the sport from being at camp, but also built the confidence in herself to put herself out there and do something that she probably wouldn't have done otherwise. So, I like to share that story because it shows not only what kids are learning when they're there at camp, but how it can help transfer after camp is over and help get kids involved in community sports. And I'll pass it back to Tyler for the closing words.
All right. Once again, I just want to thank everyone, and it's a very opportunity for kids, and we hope to continue it. So, if there are any questions, and how do you try to answer questions?
As it relates to age, the campers obviously, to his apparent range, but what typically, one, did we see from an age standpoint? Was there, I can say, a hotspot within the elementary age? And two, how are we connecting with families in order to share this opportunity?
Yeah, so we have identified students in third, fourth, and fifth grade for camp, and some of that was because of the research component from Ohio State. And also, students in that age bracket, we felt, were kids who were potentially going to middle school, had a more opportunity for sports, so it was like the right age to identify students in that area. And with the parents, we have a pre-survey. We did a survey at the beginning. We had a big parent meeting at Riverside where all the parents came, and we had just about everyone in attendance there. And we did a pre-survey, and then after the camp is over, there was another survey, a post-survey, and also provided information to parents too after the camp as well. So, and also emails. We have all parents on a common email thread, so they're aware of the clinics that were taking place this, about this year.
I have to mention to you on the face, we have the Olympics.
Oh, yeah. At the end of each session, the session, there were two sessions, and each one was four weeks long. And at the end of each session, there was a Life Sports Olympics, where parents came out and participated, and they had different sports, and kids got to celebrate and, you know, share their accomplishments at the Olympics.
A quick question. You mentioned there were a hundred and fourteen students last summer, and you want to get to two forty. Well, that includes students from other schools, like maybe Thomas, or some that aren't in the Saeta feeder pack?
Yeah, our goal right now is students in the Dublin-Soda feeder pattern. We open to discussing opportunities for other students too. The reason we have chosen that were based on metrics that we've identified as sport participation, you know, economic diversity, cultural diversity, you know, anti-racial results, and things like that. So, we're very specific in identifying students with campus, but we're certainly open to conversations including our kids, especially if we get them to.
Just to clarify, so are you, are parents self-selecting into this program, or are you referring students?
It's a combination of both. So, we open the registration, and we work closely with counselors to identify students in the schools that we recruited from, identify families and students who may be most vulnerable, who may benefit the most from this program. And our school counselors restyle directly to those parents to help them with the application of registration. Registration was limited to one day, so all families applied at once, and then we took, we took the parents.
Thank you.
Hi. I just wanted to know that I had the opportunity to do a visit twice, and it was truly amazing. The Olympic ceremony was out of sorts, and Mrs. Rigby would probably move that I probably need to attend the camp and learn a little bit more about sports. But I did want to ask, as Mrs. De Silva said, going from one fourteen to two forty, two fifty would be phenomenal. It's a fantastic program. My question is, I know that we were more kind of transportation, building, food. What would you be looking for? There's a lot of credit donations. I know it costs a lot for a child. It's just, I mean, it's a huge amount of work, and I can't say enough great things. What were you, where would you see DCS taking a bigger role in this to accomplish this and to not each one of the kids away?
I think repeating what was done this year for sure. The location and the transportation and food were huge. The challenge that we have is really staffing. I think we would all agree that staffing is difficult, and to secure enough staff to have that many students will be a challenge. But we're talking about reducing it from two four-week sessions to one four-week session. So, we would have more kids, but they would get the same experience in a short amount of time. Because our second session, the staff was a little more tired, it was hotter outside, you know, everyone was a little bit more fatigued. So, we think our current aim, based on our experience this summer, was to reduce it to one session, and that may help with our staffing as well. Thank you. All right. Once again, thank you.
Tyler, actually, I wonder if I'll, is there a question? I saw, and this is actually the question on the website, I answered one through some, that there are, we'll call them sport-specific clinics that are occurring as well that will be at Davis. Is there indication of how the registration is and the participation for those after the fact? I saw that it's specific to people who participated this summer.
Yeah, the one we just did in September, I think had twenty-five or thirty kids come, and I imagine that fluctuated throughout the year. So, I don't know how many of you have signed up for the next one in October, but that's what we have.
Is that a part of the golden living board, is to have throughout the school year? Is that my question?
Yes.
Summer-specific, which I think absolutely fills the need, but the ensuing months afterwards throughout the school year?
Yeah, we love to have the clinics take place, you know, all year, and part of that is that we can, you know, keep those kids interested, keep them involved, and come back the next year and continue all the way through high school. And when I visited Ohio State and saw Life Sports in action with hundreds and hundreds of kids, many instructors, the trainers in Life Sports, were former participants, and it was fantastic to see. Many of those kids, you know, didn't have an interest in college until they did Life Sports. And then they got involved, got familiar with Ohio State University, ended up going there and doing Life Sports with a trainer. So, it was just fantastic, the longevity of it. So, yeah, to answer your question, we do hope to keep doing this with clinics to keep it going.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. For public participation for action items on the agenda, there is no one signed up this evening. And then I will turn it back over to Dr. Marshausen for superintendent comments.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Before I get going tonight into the slides, just a couple of big thank yous. Thank you to Mrs. Lee Work and Mrs. Gray, and to the folks who helped organize and put together our Hall of Fame event and our Golden Red Luncheon. Had the opportunity to speak at both of those events. The conductees into the Hall of Fame this year were focused on Kaufman. As we rotate each year, last year was Jerome Kaufman, this year, next year will be Saeta. Amazing, talented people who spoke so highly of their experience in the Dublin City School District. the Dublin City School District and how it provided them the foundation to achieve amazing success in their life after high school. And then at the Golden Grads Lunch, as I said, to the folks who graduated at least fifty years ago, so the, the young ones in that group graduated in nineteen seventy-two, we filled the, you're from Country Club, and I don't know any community that has that type of support and that type of longevity from folks who graduate. They love their schools, they love their community, so many of them stay in the community. And it is just such a refreshing event to hear folks talk about their experience and then socialize and just chat with them before the meal and the presentation. It's just, Dublin is a very special place. And for that many of those senior citizens to go back, it's pretty cool. I also had the opportunity with our senior citizens to share our culture playbook. Lots of positive remarks, lots of comments. So it's fun to get to share what we're doing with our folks there. So just two really great events. Couple of things that I'd like to share. We talked last week, last meeting, about elementary security officers. And we are moving forward with the hiring of two former officers to be our elementary security patrol. They will be hired through the ESC of Central Ohio, similar to how we hired Chuck Collier, who started in this role. We've had active collaboration with the Dublin Police. While we're not going to share the names today, because one of them is still taking care of a current employment position there, retired officers, one from Dublin County, Dublin Police Department, one from Union County. And we will work these folks into our district's safety plans. I've already had some questions. Where will they be? Will there be a rotation? Well, those safety plans are confidential, so we're not going to publicly share where the officers are going to be all, all of the time. But we will work hand in hand with our SROs, with our partners at Dublin Police. And we do believe this is another layer of security and another layer of prevention that we're able to provide to our elementaries. And again, I think this is going to be a model that we'll see other school districts follow as we work through the process of making sure that we have resources in our schools that allow our teachers to teach. And ultimately, that is our goal, is to be able to have our students and our teachers safe, so our teachers can teach and our students can learn. Any questions from board members on where we're going and to move forward with the elementary security officers? A couple upcoming community conversations. October eighteenth, we'll be at ML Campus. On October twenty-second, we will be at the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to thank everyone who came to our two community conversations last week. I think we were able to demonstrate at both Monday night's event, which was specifically focused on book review process and policy changes. And then again, on Tuesday morning, and I thank our board members who were able to join us for one or both of those events. We demonstrate how, as a community, we can have civil conversations about emotional issues. And how we, as a community that is incredibly diverse, we're able to come together and find the middle ground. We're able to come together and focus on academics. And we can provide our students with an elite education that prepares them for success in the world after they graduate from our school district. It's not easy, and it's not always clean. These are tough conversations about emotional issues, but we don't shy away from them. We lean into them. We listen. We're empathetic. And we try to build bridges, not create debuts. And I know that our student representatives were able to be at the meeting. And I think, Will, you had something that you wanted to share about the community conversation.
Can you hear me? Oh, yeah. Okay. So, yeah, it was, it was a really, it was a really interesting experience to hear what the parents of the district thought about variety of matters. And when I say everything was the topic of conversation at the community conversation, I mean, everything was broached there. And I think that the student representatives wandered away from that conversation. And I think that we were most, we were most interested in the perspectives that the community members had about mental health, students' mental health. And I think that we all, in a follow-up conversations after that, kind of talked amongst ourselves, of like, how do we get what we know to be true, or what we're experiencing? How do we communicate that to members of our community who don't necessarily have exposure to that on a daily basis? And we are going to be having a meeting with Mr. Wolf coming up sometime soon to have, to kind of start those conversations. And I think that we're going to try and work on possibly having a vendor seminar like that to have students be able to share these stories and make it very clear that mental health is a major concern, especially for our generation, that it's, you know, it's a difficult conversation, but it's one that needs to be had. And I think that we're, we're attracted to have that conversation.
Thank you, Ron. Our culture playbook is now up on the website, and this is a screenshot from our website. If you go to the About Us section, you can see our videos, you can see our culture playbook. We did a video this week that is the explanation of the culture playbook that will be posted shortly, so that folks who weren't able to make it to the community conversation are able to hear how this is being implemented, to hear how this is the foundation for how, as the adults, we want to model our behavior. And as we work with our students through modeling the behavior and having clear expectations around these three core values, it allows us to put our students in a position where they have a competitive advantage when they go out into the world, having these skills and these values, allowing them to be successful in what's next for them, whatever that may be. I've got three slides that have a lot of data, and this will get posted for anyone who wants to see when Janet puts this update on there. The Ohio Department of Education, in what's sometimes referred to as the Cup Report, sometimes referred to as the District Profile Report, shares state data among a number of different areas. And just some things to share with the board and with our community, because I, I don't think we always realize how fortunate we are, but how diverse we are, and how we've got an awful lot of things going on at the same time. In the Dublin City School District, if anyone wants to file a public records request for this data, it's all on the state website. If you just search Cup Report Dublin, you can get everything I'm looking at here. Economically disadvantaged, Dublin, sixteen point one percent. U-Rays, three point six. Hilliards, twenty-one. Ole Danji, six point three. And the Ohio average for economically disadvantaged students is forty-six percent. Racial minority population, where forty point three percent of the students in the Dublin City Schools would be labeled by the Department of Education as a racial minority. Sixteen percent in UA, twenty-eight percent in Hilliards, thirty percent in Ole Danji, the state is twenty-eight percent. When we say we're one of the most diverse school districts in the state of Ohio, we're one of the most diverse school districts in the state of Ohio. And as the ninth largest school district at forty percent, we have one of the largest headcounts of students who are minority students in the state of Ohio. When we talk about coming together and having conversations and celebrating this diversity, we do this really well. Do we have space to improve? Of course, we always have space to improve. But knowing that, as a district, this is who we are, we do this really well. Thirteen percent of our students are students with disabilities. Similar districts, twelve point nine, state of Ohio, fifteen point six. Ten percent of our students, English is not their primary language, they're English limited learners. For our similar districts, that's five percent. State of Ohio is three point six percent. And a hundred percent of our third graders moved to fourth grade last year. So when we look at what our teachers do in our classrooms, ten percent of our students, and Mrs. Schwanki, I think you have the exact numbers here. How many kids did we enroll this past school year?
Exact is a big.
Okay, ballpark.
About seventeen fifty.
Seventeen hundred and fifty students were enrolled this year. How many were EL students?
Eight hundred of those seventeen fifty indicated on their enrollment form that they had some sort of other likelihood to open the hall. Of those eight hundred, four hundred of them qualified for further testing and services.
So a quarter of, of the new students, so that's kindergartners and new kiddos. And our teachers go straight at this. We embrace this. We do this really well. And we get more students off EL services than any school district in the state of Ohio. And I share this data because when we talk about areas we have to improve, we also have to celebrate. We also have to recognize that our teachers are doing incredible things in our classrooms each and every day. And when we look at those teachers, sixty-eight percent of our teachers have ten or more years' experience, a little higher than the state average in similar districts. Our administrator to pupil ratio is higher than similar districts and it's higher than the state of Ohio. And I know there have been some questions about hiring administrators. We are still light on administrators compared to our similar districts in the state. In fact, our administrative expenditure per pupil is less than similar districts and significantly less than the state average. So as we do this work, and there's nobody here who's an administrator who's saying, we're overworked. This is not what we're saying. We're blessed to have amazing teachers, amazing parents that we work with. And what we get to do every day is enjoy for us. Where does our money go? Our money goes to constructional expenses in our classrooms. These are our teachers, these are our professionals. This is where the money goes in the Dublin City Schools. We spend more in the classrooms than similar districts and more in the classrooms in the state of Ohio. This allows us to have class caps that were part of the two thousand and eighteen levy promise that we stick to. This allows us to keep those smaller class sizes. So as we do what we do, when we talk about where does our money go, our money goes in the classrooms.
And that's all too, when you're talking about state funding and stuff like this, we don't get very much from the state from that standpoint. And you see the next slides there. But one slide that I want to point out too is just, I think, one of the most important things. So if you think about, we pay income tax to the state of Ohio, and our residents do. Of every dollar we send to the state, Dublin City Schools gets back only thirteen cents. Our similar districts is twenty-six cents, and the statewide average is almost eighty-six cents. So however you look at it, you know, we're locally funded is what we, and we're always accountable to our taxpayers. But, you know, we're essentially, we're subsidizing other districts when it comes to state funding and our local income tax dollars that go to the state. So.
And, and just to show, where does that income tax go? We get about twenty-three hundred dollars per pupil from the state of Ohio. The state average is sixty-five hundred. About fifteen percent of our money comes from the state. State average is forty. Federal money, we get about four point one percent of funding comes from the feds. State average is nine. And you can see in the last statistic here, almost eighty percent of the funding that we have to run our school district comes from our local property taxes. And it's on the back of our homeowners and our businesses and our folks here at Bella. So I just wanted to share these slides. The Cup Report gets updated every year in September. This is that updated information. But it does allow us to stop and step back from a set for a moment and say, we've got a lot going on. And we get focused on improvement, 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 which is what we should be doing. But there are times that you step back and say, hey, we're, we're doing okay. And we've got, we've got some really difficult tasks that we handle exceptionally well as a school district. Any questions from our board?
Just, just one. So I'm looking at this one. So Brian, you may have noticed that average cost per pupil is around fourteen thousand.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your update. Okay, now we'll turn it over to Mr. Kerr for the treasurer comments.
Turn it back on there. On this evening's agenda from the treasurer's office is, we have just a couple of things on here. We have two new student activity purpose clauses is on the Thai Club at Sciota High School and the Drama Club over at Eversole Run. And we have three donations this evening, from Chapman PTO to Chapman Elementary, for some library seating, bulletin boards, and supplies. The annual donation that we've been getting from the Greater Dublin Realty Association for suicide prevention programming, and a anonymous donation to Thomas. And our guidance counselors, they, the donor wanted for support students in needs. The guidance counselor will work with and identify those students that will need that and be able to use those funds for those students. So, Mrs. Rigby, you mentioned, yes, it is fourteen thousand seven twenty-nine for those. Our similar districts are about thirteen four, and about statewide average is about thirteen thousand four hundred. So we do really well with what we do. As Dr. Marchausen explained, most of our money is in instruction. And also, you know, with pupil support there too, as, as we support all our students.
All right. Thank you for the update. Item six D. It is recommended by the treasurer, the Board of Education approved item six B, approval of the student activity purpose clauses, and six C, approval of donations. Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Are there questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
And Mr. Melby?
Yes. Motion passes five to zero. Okay, it's going to be these superintendent comments.
Okay. Good evening. Just a quick update for you tonight. As you all know, we have a very prescriptive curriculum review cycle in Dublin City Schools. And each curriculum area, content area, has five phases to a curriculum review. And they're very extensive. They involve community input, teacher input, and then upon adoption, they involve lack implementation and training for our teachers. Typically, we would be finishing up these one language arts this year in the beginning phase one of math. We had decided that it's best practice for us to pause on math from this spring until next spring, spring of two thousand and twenty-three. There's two reasons for this. One is we last did a curriculum review cycle for math right before the end of, and implementation was tricky, to say the least. We really want to give our teachers a little bit more time to spend with that math curriculum adoption and gather more relevant data to help us determine what changes we might want to make in the future. The second reason is that right now, our curriculum review cycle does language arts, then math, and then we go into phases of social studies, world languages, and science. It's a heavy lift for our teachers to be trained and implement to such wavy content areas, especially elementary, where to teach all subjects. So this will allow us a gap year, so to speak, between language arts and math. So we're just pausing to gather a little bit more data in this little reading room going forward with our review cycles. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you for the update. Chief Operating Officer comments?
Good evening. I have a couple of edits for the boards. We're going to, the first one is our list of payment in lieu. This is payment to parents and students who brought some material practical. This year, you'll notice that the list is a little shorter than it usually is then because of changing procedure, where if the board has already approved a family and a gas payment in lieu, they will not be put up again in front of the board. So the list that you see tonight is just for new parents that are put on. The list is not necessarily a complete list. And the second piece is a resolution, similar to what we did last year. So if you remember last year, basically at this time, it was kind of a little late in the game as far as modders go, we decided. in the game as far as modules go, decided that the metro, and we asked the board for resolution to bypass public bidding in place of request for proposal, which is still a competitive way of bidding things, which is a lot less regulation, a lot less to move ahead for urgency. This year, we're asking the same because the, the decision for modules changed similarly a little late, although this year, a little later than last year, because we won't have an award to the board until next board meeting, where last year, since September, we asked for a resolution to bypass and give an award. So this year, the pressure's on us a little bit more. Dr. Marchausen knows the operation. Enjoy the challenge. So this year, we're going to challenge ourselves a little bit more than we did last year. So this resolution that you have in front of you is to allow us to do a request for proposal for twelve classrooms, modules, similar to what we've just built at Jerome, and where, again, a public bidding process, it takes quite a few weeks because of the specs you have to put together, the time it takes to public bid, the, the whole process. But we'll have a request for proposal done and a review for scorecard and approval to the board by next meeting. And we've already started working with, just as passively a week and a half, with the Jerome Village Authority on where we're going to place these modules. First, we have to work with the Jerome Village Authority, and then we'll work with Union County, with their planning and zoning folks, and their engineering folks as well, as far as water runoff, so there's quite a bit of work to do. And, but our biggest piece right now that has been decided to put modules is just to return them and make sure we can get what we need and the style that we would like. Any questions?
The intent on those portfolios would be to have those installed prior to leaving the school next year?
Absolutely, yeah. Our intent would be to have them installed by July first, of course, sooner. And why July first? Would we like to, there's like two punch list items, so we could try to use the month of July for punch list, and then in July, so teachers can begin moving in and setting up their classrooms.
Thank you.
And, and just like we gave the city of Dublin a sunset with our car modules at Jerome, we're saying that this is a three-year short-term solution. Within three years, we will either have to build an elementary in Northwest Quadrant, and right now, we're seeing about a hundred and fifty-plus students per year at the elementary level in Northwest Quadrant. We will either have to build another elementary, or we will have to do some significant redistricting. So what the modules afford us over the next two or three years is time to approach our voters and say, this is where we're seeing the growth, this is where another elementary is needed. And if another elementary isn't built, it will be a significant redistricting that would shift students both down the east and west side corridors, as we move students out of the northwest, down towards buildings that have a little bit more space. So this is our band-aid, so that students potentially won't have to be redistricted three times in a short period of time.
Dr. Marchausen, will you answer one question that I had, which was how long do we anticipate the modules?
My other question, Mr. Sharp, is public bidding versus the request for proposal. In your experience, do we end up coming in a lot higher, how would that, um, come in?
That's a, that's a, that's a good question. It really depends on, in my experience, this is structured from my experience over this, you know, throughout thirty years, it really depends upon the category. So if you're doing like a national team project, I think public bidding has been unknown. I think public bidding always really tests the market. Modules is pretty much set pricing, you know, the price of the market's usually pretty very controlled, so we're going to reach out to three of the largest module manufacturers and see what they have available, you know, the style that we're looking for, the lease rates we're looking for, there's a lot of pieces that come to it. So we'll still get a competitive taste of market.
So you don't think we're, I imagine this is managed?
I know, not, 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 not with this category, I don't.
Thank you.
And if I do may say that, and, and, Mr. Valentine, Mr. Melody, and others, before I reported on twenty sixteen, we didn't do public bidding, we did what's called state term. The state term is something that the state has said, this is the best price, you don't have to go public bid, and I have only wanted to do state term in an emergency, and I don't think I've ever done state term. We've only done public bidding, not just about anything that needs public bidding. So this is only the second time we've done this bypass because it is true emergency and, and, and Mrs. Schwanke, Dr. Marchausen, talk probably talked better, but I think not what words have ever gone, but I think it was a very thoughtful decision to say whether we're going to have these modules or not. I think they want to stay on a moment, let's come to something up this summer, and because we did this to make sure it was the right thing for the students, that's what kind of forces into this resolution. But typically, I publicly bid just about everything, much to the chagrin sometimes of everyone wants things a little quicker.
And we are setting this like the newest set of modular classrooms at Jerome High School, not the older ones, or not the ones that have been previously at Elon Penney. It will be interior, it will have an interior already, it will have controlled access points. We will have adults monitoring the doors. We will be able to have both camera and human eyes on students going back and forth from modules to classrooms. So we are very mindful, and I was up at depth today, reassuring, reassuring Ms. Ursin and asking Troy to bring his fourth and fifth grade teachers on a field trip to Jerome, so that they can see the new modules, because they have gotten much better, they're larger rooms, and when you're in that modular unit, you feel like you're in a hallway, you don't feel like you're, you know, acting a module. So I do think that it's something that we can secure and provide those services to our parents who are there.
How many students are we not expecting, but how many can we hold, like to kind of hold us over?
Well, if there are twelve classrooms, they are the same size of classrooms that we would have in our country, so there would be twenty-five to twenty-seven students potentially in each classroom. So you're talking about the modular potentially holding three hundred kids. You know, we get that type of space. Am I being a little bit right? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Right, for item nine C, it's recommended by the superintendent of the Board of Education approve items nine A, approval of payment and leave of transportation for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year, and nine V, approval of the resolution to waive competitive bidding. Do we have a motion to approve?
Seven.
Okay, additional questions or comments? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
And Mr. Melody?
Yes, motion passes. Yes, motion passes five to zero. Executive Director of Human Resources?
Good evening, members of the board. Can you hear me now?
Okay.
Thanks, Eric. I'll start with our certified agenda tonight. We have one administrative job description on the agenda for your approval. This is the coordinator of project manager technology. This position would report to the director of PK Development Technology and run point on various tech projects that are currently or will be underway in our district. We started our school year this year with two teacher vacancies, and you'll see one new teacher hire that's on the board agenda tonight for approval. We'll see a salary change, and then we also have a hiring substitute speech language pathologist on as well. We do have a few more teachers teaching six periods for the school year, and then one lone individual that needs to be caught up for summer school work. Then several salary changes for supplemental pupil activity supervision contracts are on tonight, along with the resignation of a supplemental. And then in attachments, you'll see several athletic, extracurricular, and academic supplementals, pupil activity supervision contracts for the school year, and then there's an attachment that has several athletic event orders that's also on tonight. Moving on to our classified agenda, you'll see two reservations and one retirement. Our retirement is from Julie Rowner, she'll be retiring from the Early Childcare Center with ten and a half years of service in our district. Thank Julie for her service. There are five new hires, and then seven salary changes and unpaid leave ask requests as well. Moving on to our stipends, there are fourteen stipends, some of them are revisions to previously approved stipends. Five of them are related to the upcoming eighth grade Washington DC trip. Three of these are district content aids, and two of these three are revisions of previously worked with items. Four of them relate to the mentoring of new teachers that are working in our district, either through the resident educator program or first year Dublin Mentoring Program. And then the other two are for the high school course and career handbook design, and then the superintendent's teacher advisory committee as well. Any questions on agenda items tonight in the HR section?
Okay, thank you. All right, item eleven D, it is recommended by the superintendent of the Board of Education approve items eleven A, approval of personnel action items certified, eleven B, approval of personnel action items classified, and eleven C, approval of the stipend requests. Is there a motion to approve?
Seven.
Seven.
All right, additional questions or comments? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. De Silva?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rigby?
Yes.
And Mr. Melody?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. All right, future agenda items?
Just a reminder to the board that I will be asking an executive session to discuss evaluation of a public employee at the next board meeting. I would also like to take a moment to thank Mayor Fox, city manager, I'm not sure which one we thank right now, outgoing city manager again, who are incoming about hand for allowing us to use this wonderful space tonight. I enjoy the tradition of having our National Merit Scholars recognized. It's a great opportunity for us to have a picture, and so just a, we're blessed to have this state in our community and be able to use it, so thanks to our partners in the city of Dublin for making this available for us.
And just an update on future meetings, probably it's looking the second meeting of October, or the twenty-fourth, that we'll have the five-year forecast update. Just a reminder, that needs to be done by the end of November, but that's our plan to have it up at that point in time.
Eric, thank you for your services, school district, and best of luck, and I appreciate all you've done, you've been through a lot of this.
Yes, I missed the opportunity to have you do the pledge allegiance. All right, any other future agenda items? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero, meeting is adjourned.